Okay. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Newburyport zoning board appeals. My name is Rob Champetti. I have the privilege of serving as Chair of the Newburyport CBA. This is the hearing for November fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. Our published start time being seven P M. It being seven P M., we're going to go ahead and open our meeting. I always begin with a quick introduction of our board members. We establish a quorum. A quorum essentially is just establishing that we have at least four voting members, which is a minimum required in order to conduct the business of the CBA this evening. I will then, some of these might be, we'll then go ahead and establish who our voting members are. I think we have one absentee this evening, who is Ms. Lynn Scal, one of our associate members. She's not with us this evening, so Ms. Patricia Peckman, to my immediate right, will be serving at voting. Yeah, we have five, but there's one recusal, I believe. So I'll go through the applications, although we have only two and one continuation of a minor modification, which we'll do first. Basically, I'll call the role now, and members of the CBA just kindly answer, present or here. Okay, Mr. Stephen DeWalt.
Here.
And Swanton.
Here.
Mr. Walton Shannon.
Here.
Mr. Gregory Bennet.
Here.
Ms. Lynn Scal is absent, and Ms. Patricia Peck.
Here.
We have Rob Champetti on here. That's one, two, three, four, five, six members present. We do have a quorum. Our voting members this evening will be Mr. DeWalt, Mr. Swanton, Mr. Shannon, Mr. Bennet, and myself. In one of the applications, we have a refusal, in which case the voting, and which one is, who has to refuse themselves in one of the applications?
I don't believe anyone's refused for twenty-two Market Street. That's because Patricia Peck was a voting member last meeting, so she would be the voting.
Thank you. So the voting members on the mining, so the vote, the five voting members for the two applications before us, ninety-nine Ferry Road, and sixty-six Prospect Street will be myself, Mr. DeWalt, Mr. Swanton, Mr. Shannon, and Mr. Bennet. For the minor modification continuance on the matter of twenty-two Market Street, the continuation of voting members will be myself, Mr. DeWalt. No, sorry, myself, Mr. Swanton, Mr. Shannon, Mr. Bennet, and Ms. Peck. Okay, calling the, we have Shaw the role, we've established our quorum and our voting members. Essentially, what we'll do is I'll begin by reading the first application, which is the request for minor modification. It's a continuation. We'll then hear from the continuation of presentation from the applicant and turn the shades on behalf of the applicant, will then get into our public hearings in the sequence that you see them on the agenda. And with that, I will go ahead and just announce the continuation of the minor modification. The request for minor modification on twenty-two Market Street that are having been continued from our last CBA hearing, which date was our last hearing. Great point. Thank you. Just taking a moment to introduce, stretch and joy, our keeper of the minutes, Australian Report, our planning director, and Ms. Caitlin Sullivan, our city planner. Okay, with that, may we continue to hear from the applicant, turn the shades. Good evening.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, good evening. The record Douglas Chang of Benner and Nicholson, here representing the Market Street in L L C. With me this evening, Mr. Gary Van Gary from Market Street in L L C. You recall, we were here last, we were seeking a minor modification to essentially allow us to use a reproduction window in restoring the inn, as opposed to restoring and reusing the existing windows. You'll recall, we had a number of, we discussed a number of issues with respects to the application of codes and the application of safety. And probably one of the biggest things that came out of that meeting was a discussion of our need or our, the suggestion that we went in and meet with the historic commission to discuss the modifications so that they could provide a recommendation or a statement to the board regarding the use of the reproduction windows. And we were, the historic commission was great in allowing us to meet with them before this hearing. I think we had a very productive meeting. They think, and I have to be honest, that at the end of the day, I think, you know, the discussions and analysis of code was not necessarily the driving force of our discussion with the historic commission, but rather, I think it really came down to safety, liability, and risk. We discussed with the historic commission our original commitment to restore the windows. But as you'll know, we ran into some issues with whether they could be restored in a manner to provide safe, effective, and long-term egress. And so we went through a lot of iterations and trying to figure that out. At the end of the day, it was deemed that it was in the best interest certainly of my clients with respect to liability, risk, and insurance, wanting to ensure that their folks who come and stay at the inn are going to be safe, that we wanted to do the reproduction window. So we did talk with the historic commission. I believe the chairman was kind enough to send a letter of recommendation to the board in which I think they agree that in this particular instance, in light of the safety issues, that it would be acceptable to use the reproduction windows. Although we did discuss the fact that in not being able to restore the other windows and therefore to really keep things as historically correct as possible, my clients offered to do a cedar shake roof on the building in light of the use of the reproduction windows. I think that was well received by the commission. They did agree, I believe, that it would make for a better reproduction of the whole building, so to speak, or, you know, the protection of the historical character. We also talked about the windows themselves, whether they could be provided, made available to someone who wants to restore them or reuse them. My clients have certainly called hardly in agreement with that. They'd love to see them reused and repurposed if someone can do that, so they will be made available for, to the historic commission or to the board or, you know, whatever city entity would like to help us in finding a new home for them. So with that, we're happy to answer any other questions, but I think at the end of the day, it really came down to our discussions with the historic commission, and they were great and working on this.
All right. Thank you, Attorney to Shane. And members of the CBA, before I sort of go further in this, I want to make sure everyone has an opportunity to read the commentary and the summary of the decision of the Newburyport Historic Commission with respect to the applicant's revisitation to them with these changes in mind. Does anyone not see that? Nope. All right. Great. With that, was there anything you wanted to add, Counselor, before you just close?
No, if I have any questions, I'm certainly here and Ben's here to answer any other questions you might have.
I'm just going to, in the interest of just sort of lapping the room, we'll go, we'll open up a public comment to see to the extent to which anyone this evening may have any commentary. And I'll just ask, and Sullivan, go ahead and put that slide up on public comment if you could. I'll first start with Chopin sending into the room, and then we can go online to the extent we have anyone viewing. View zoom. Seeing no hands, going once, going twice. All right. I'm going to close, well, I'll keep this open, and we'll go to anyone online who among the attendees, if you're listening online and wish to simply be heard, just feel free to raise your hand. We will ask you to unmute your mic, we'll do the same, and just give us your name and feel free to share any comments you may have. I only see two attendees, and I see no hands online, so going once and twice, I will close the public comment. Thank you. And we will go into questions from the board. Let's see, when we start, Scal will sound here. I'm sorry, let's start with Peck.
I don't have any questions.
No? Great. Mr. Bennet.
Just one, Attorney to Shane, I just wanted to make sure that you had a chance to look at the conditions proposed by the N H C. Have you seen those?
Yes.
Okay.
We discussed them at length.
Okay. And the specific wording in condition one regarding the window, et cetera. I just thought one of the, I'm intending.
That we were going to use the mountain, green mountain windows, that they are the same size, same shape. Yes.
Just want to make sure.
We read them, yeah.
Thank you. All right.
Great. Mr. DeWalt.
I have no questions.
All right. Mr. Chairman.
No questions.
And Mr. Swanton.
Yeah, I just want to say that I appreciate, I just want to kind of suggest that you go to the historic commission, and I appreciate you going there. As you, I think you know, I sat in on the meeting. It's funny, I came down here looking for the meeting, and I thought it was Zoom-only. I thought it was back in the COVID era, but anyway, I went home and listened to it online. And it was, I appreciate you going there because, you know, we see a lot of things in the historic district here on the zoning board, but we can never really talk about the historic attributes, except with the D C O D, which control over the district, a proposal like this, or we're supposed to think about it and get the input in the store. So I really appreciate you going there. Thank you. I guess my question is, Mr. Bennet talked about the wording around the Green Mountain windows. Also, I think you have offered several times to put cedar shakes on the roof, and you mentioned again tonight, I assume you're still fighting for that. Also, a topic had come up at the historic commission. I think somebody from the preservation trust was curious about the front door. I also thought you would address that very well that night. And I assume you're still, are you still looking at trying to figure out if there's like still ancient windows up there underneath or whatever? Could you just comment on that?
Sure, that was part of the original, original meeting we had with the historic commission, and I believe it was part of their recommended patient earlier. While they believe that the structure of the entrance is, you know, historic and I guess it's odd that the panel above the window is solid, and there's a question of whether there could have been or would have been a transom.
Or still are.
Or it still could be there, and we had agreed to take that apart and to restore the window.
It's not still there.
It's not there.
But I think with the Green Mountain window company, I can get a transom and make it back. So, yeah, unfortunately, it was there.
You never know what's under there.
Yeah, yeah.
You're talking early seventeen hundreds.
I know.
Struggle. He's up for a Newburyport.
But it will have one when we finish.
Yeah. Well, appreciate it. No, I really applaud you for going there and going through the steps. Appreciate their input. So that was really my only question. I have no other questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Great. I don't have any further questions either, just to echo Mr. Swanton's comments. I appreciate the extra time and the effort, and, you know, this is a granular process, and it's a, it is an endeavor of inches, you know, that sometimes takes the time it takes. And the result in our built environment lasts a generation or more. So the extra inches and minutes and time that we, you know, spend now is for, it sounds a little bit poetic, but it's kind of for the, you know, the best result and posterity of our built environment, and these preservation efforts are greatly appreciated when we can sort of see them through and just take our time. So thank you for.
A great time to do that.
If there are no further questions, we must go into deliberations. And I'll begin with Mr. Swanton on what first I will need as a board just to make the determination or at least apply on whether or not we believe it's a minor modification, and then your thoughts on whether it meets with your approval. We can just kind of go around a little on that. That.
Well, I was concerned last week about not having input from the historic commission on something like this, but we have it now, and they're supportive. And the applicant has indicated around the condition of bright windows and cedar shake roof and whatever else. And so took a little extra here, but I'm glad we've got through all that, and I now can support that this is indeed a minor modification.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Agreed. I feel it's minor modification, and I will support it. Thank you.
Mr. DeWalt.
I would concur, based on where we are, you know, I think that you calling it a minor modification, after all, the process that we've gone through really it'll work here. Yeah, I can concur.
That keeps it better.
Yeah. Based upon the extensive examination of this application, I too can agree that it's a minor modification at this point. I would say that I will approve it, and I think the approval and the efforts of all have resulted in a appropriate balance of some significant interests, including the historic interest of the building, the safety and functionality of the windows and the structure, and also the importance of the reuse of this structure, which I applaud the developer in that respect. So for all those reasons, I think this is a process that worked very well when we can approve it.
Thank you, Mr. Bennet and Ms. Peck.
Yeah, likewise, and I don't know if you know, nor East Architectural Southern.
I did know, yeah.
They would love to get those.
If I can't find anybody, that was the first thing I meant.
Yeah, because people wonder all the time, like, done, right, so fine.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, that'll be where it goes if you can't find it.
Great.
Yes. Yeah, great. I concur. I agree. I think each Bennet's comments, it's a process that seems to have worked. So again, my appreciation, and also I think our collective board appreciation to the historic commission and Chair Richards for the additional effort to revisit this, offer their advisory opinion, give us the, you know, the detail and the expertise that we, you know, that we as sort of fellow volunteer citizen boards rely upon, bind between each other. That's, that's a functional, that's a functional board of functioning members when we can aspire to actually, you know, get this information, seek the information, get what we're looking for, and endeavor to make a better decision with it. So thank you to those folks as well. Unless there's any further deliberations, I will just look for a motion. And whoever wishes to craft a motion, I think there's some conditions that should be carried forward, however you wish to bring them.
I'll make a motion to approve this, to approve this as being a minor modification of twenty-two to twenty-four Market Street with a couple of additions. One is that the replacement windows, as represented to to the Newburyport Historical Commission on nine three twenty-three, the Green Mountain window and door company milestone double home, matching existing windows and size operation and mutton pattern, and having three D exterior mutton profile shall be permitted in lieu of existing windows previously called out by to be preserved, quote, reserved, repaired, and refinished as required, unencumbered. Location shall match previously approved plans. The second thing is the applicant shall make the best effort to salvage the existing historic windows for reuse. The applicant shall notify the office of planning department, planning and development, office of planning development, once the windows are removed and potentially available for reuse. And I would add number three, that the applicant acts proposed is moving to a cedar shake roof. And that's my.
Great. Motion. Something. Gretchen, you. Excellent. All right, motion's made. We have second.
Second.
Excellent. Thank you. Mr. Bennet, motion's made by Mr. Swanton, secondly, then Mr. Bennet calling the role, Mr. Swanton.
Yes.
Mr. Shannon.
Yes.
Mr. DeWalt.
I'm not voting in the.
Sorry, Mr. Bennet.
Yes.
And Ms. Peck.
Yes.
And Rob Champetti. I vote yes. That is five in the affirmative. The ice habit motion carries, and the minor modification with conditions is approved. Good luck.
Well, thank you very much. We appreciate your time.
Yeah, well, thank you very much for your, your patience. All right, moving on to our first matter, we're going to open our public hearing. We have two matters on public hearing this evening. The first of the two is the application of David Reisler Bruce, and Caroline O will be care of Lisa Mead, Mead Talman Acosta LLC for the property located at ninety-nine Ferry Road. This is a special permit for non-conformities. The applicant seeks all necessary permits, permissions, and applications and approvals to demolish the rear portion of the structure and construct a new rear addition that extends existing, an existing non-conformity side yard setback and adds greater than five hundred square feet on a lot with non-conforming frontage. Turn it to me.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Lisa Mead, Mead Talman Acosta, thirty-three Street in Newburyport. And with me here this evening is David Reiser Bruce and Caroline, I don't think he's here, but maybe watching. And Scott Brown, the architect on the project, and my colleague Ben Taylor. And so if you go to the next slide, please, thank you. So the prop, David and Caroline proposed to remove the existing rear addition and construct a new addition in that, in the rear of their single-family home at ninety-nine Ferry Road. The property is in the R one zoning district. There is no Form B, nor is the structure in the district data sheets. However, because the structure is dated to eighteen seventy-nine, and there was a roof line change proposed on the rear of the structure, we did go to the historic commission for demolition delay. The historic commission last week approved the property is historic, obviously, but then lifted the delay and approved the plans that you see before you this evening. So the property is non-conforming for frontage. There's a, since it's in the R one, one hundred and twenty-five feet are required. The property has one hundred and ten point fifty-four. The front yard setback is twenty-six point eight, where thirty is required, and the right side setback is seven point five feet, where twenty feet is required. So those are the non-conformities. Otherwise, the property has significant area in front, excuse me, frontage and setbacks, not frontage, significant area and setbacks. The left side setback is seventy feet, the rear setback is five hundred and twelve feet. Can't say that very often in a report. And the property includes seventy-two thousand five hundred and ninety square feet, where twenty thousand feet are required. So the lot conforms to both lot coverage and open space and the parking requirements, including lot coverage is at three point three percent and open space is at ninety-three point three percent. So as I said, David and Caroline proposed to remove the existing rear addition. If you go to the next slide, please. And construct a new rear addition and deck on the back. This will extend the right side non-conformity, which is currently seven point five, but it won't extend it to the same extent. It's going to be at nine point four and ten point three, so it won't be at seven point five. So you can see on the top of the plan here, the site plan, that upper part of the property, you can see the existing seven point five at the front right corner. And then as it goes back, it's not to the same extent. And as, again, this is only a portion of the property because it carries on beyond to the left. But in order to get the site plan to the size you wanted it, we only show the front portion of the property, since there's nothing in the back that's affected. But you see the existing house, you can see the existing deck and addition on the back. It's grayed out, it's going to be removed, where the new addition and the proposed deck will be added. There is a garage that exists on the left side of the property as well. So with that, I'm going to turn over to Scott to have him review the proposed architectural blocks.
Oh, thank you, Attorney to me. Scott Brown, the architect for the project. So as Lisa already stated, this is a rather large, very long lot, and one of the largest that I've worked on here in Newburyport. And it can certainly accommodate in addition of the length that we're proposing. So the next four slides, this is a format that I'm sure all of you are very familiar with at this point in time. We've got the existing condition drawings at the top, proposed drawings at the bottom. So this is a house that's had a lot of renovation work done to it over the years at various points in time. And a lot of those renovations have added to the functionality of the house, particularly on the upper floors. But none of those renovations have really addressed the functionality of the first floor. So first floor is rather chopped up, a lot of smaller spaces. So this project is really about improving the functionality of that first floor in the form of a kind of single-story addition off the back of the house to kind of give them a larger sort of entertaining space and a mudroom. So what we're looking at here is that, you know, the front elevation of the house, perhaps the first thing that sort of jumps, it need to be off the page, are those dormers at the roof. You know, those were added to the house in twenty sixteen. They have a very flat pitch and perhaps are a little bit of a lesson in terms of how not to do dormers, but they do, in their defense, they do add some functionality to the house. Those were done prior to our clients, you know, owning the house. So really, the only thing that we're doing on the front elevation here is that we're swapping out windows in that front left corner, perhaps I could call it like a, like a sunroom. That was, I think, was enclosed sort of sometime in the mid-eighties. So I think it's a time to, has the original windows, so I think it's time to sort of upgrade those. Sort of proposing to remove those windows and upgrade with, upgrade them with something that's sort of a little bit more modern looking. Next slide, please. So you were seeing the existing left side elevation, almost with their back to the barn on the top. And in the bottom is our proposed elevation. You can see immediately up to the far left, we are proposing a new deck. This is about the same size as the deck that they have, they currently enjoy. And immediately to the, to the right of that deck is our first floor addition. This is intended to be sort of like a living room with the cathedral ceiling. And that dormer there is going to, you know, let some light into that space. And between that box in the main house, that's our rear entry where our mudroom is located. And then this is in the location where we're proposing to sort of demolish a rear L, which the historic commission approved a couple, couple of weeks ago. Off to the right there, again, you see those windows that were new modern sort of style windows that we're proposing put in that sunroom. And immediately to the left of that, that's actually the front entry to this house. Sort of proposing to put a new door in there, a little bit adding a new front entry portico roof there to kind of give them a little bit of cover. Down the lower left-hand corner, proposed elevation, you'll see some notes indicating some material choices. We're proposing a fiber cement floor siding. House is currently sort of a mixture of old wood clambered with the newer renovation work, does have the fiber cement, so we think it's an appropriate, since it's already there, we do think it's an appropriate material choice. In terms of windows, we are proposing a clad wood window, which is going to be a higher quality than what's on, on the house now. I believe they're all vital replacement windows. On the next slide, please. Two elevations from the back, you know, existing elevation to the top. That's that rear L that we're removing, that's current and clad and wood shingles. Off to the left of that, there's a chimney there, which is not original to the house. I think that was put there at some point in time for a wood stove. And again, to the bottom, this is a proposed rear elevation, you know, a little bit of glass there, opening up to their very, very large backyard and a deck in immediate foreground. There are a couple of windows in the existing house, that back angle, and that we're trying to, you know, work around, trying to preserve and trying to keep this addition as low as we can and away from those windows. Next slide, please. Coming full circle, this is the right side of the house, you know, with its back to the immediate butters, a lot of this is screened. There's a pretty high privacy fence along this lot line, and really not a whole lot to see here. Next slide, please. Just some existing photos, starting up upper left-hand corners, taken from the front right corner. Can see a little bit of a glimpse of that chimney, which I spoke of, which is not original. Again, that's being removed. In this photo, we would see very little of this addition we're proposing. Upper two right photos are, you know, a little bit more, some views of the front. There's that sunroom that I spoke of with those windows from the eighties that we'll be replacing. And lower left-hand corner, this is taken with their back against the barn. Then you can see that sort of what is considered their front entrance immediately in front of us. This is where we're proposing to put a new portico roof. And finally, the two photos in the lower right there showing this sort of deck, rather large deck that we're intending to replace, pushing it farther back in the yard. And, you know, I think that was added sort of in two thousand and sixteen as well. And finally, the next slide, please. Just a couple, couple more photos showing, you know, what this property looks like from across the street. You know, one on the right, taken from the right, right, front right corner of the immediate right to the right there. And again, we'll see very little of this addition from, from this angle, maybe a little bit of blue at best. And then the photo off the left is beginning to show what sort of like this, this large backyard looks like. Back behind that, you know, ball ball that's parked in the driveway there, we can see the deck, and that's where our addition is going. Again, a pretty large lot, a pretty large yard, pretty private back there. And, you know, addition isn't going to be very visible. And with that, I'll pay you back to attorney.
You can go to the next slide, please, Caitlin. So we have the mine maps here, so you. So we, we have the mine maps here, so you can actually see the full extent of this property. It lines up against the Briggs Ave and Fender's Ave subdivision that was built in the sixties. And then on the right-hand side is actually a City Newbury Port wellhead area. That's owned by the City Newbury Port under the control of the Water Commission. Similarly, across the street on the upper left, that's also City Newbury Port, land related to the back of Mosin Pines. And actually, a great walk through there if you've never done it before. And then there's obviously a structural process tree as well. So if you go to the next slide, please. So under Section Nine, the board needs to make two determinations. One, whether or not there's any new non-conformities. And as I explained earlier, there are no new non-conformities. We are extending that sideline, but it's not a new non-conformity. The second requirement is that the board find that the proposed addition is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing non-conforming structure. As Scott indicated here, the lot is very large and can hold this kind of extension off the back. And even though it's a little long, the extension in itself is only six hundred thirty-one square feet more than what exists there today. So that's the new square footage that, of living area that is added to the house. Lot coverage is only affected by one percent, it goes from three point three to four point three percent. And open space goes down from ninety-three point three percent to ninety-two point three percent. So it's very little impact given the size of the property. And while there's somewhat an elongated addition, the design is proposed, features different sized portions. So it's not one big wall, including one story portion connected to the main portion of the existing house. It helps break up the massing of the addition. Additionally, the structure will remain shorter than, and behind the main portion of the existing structure, having little impact on the view of the property from the street. Lastly, in the context of the wider surrounding area, this is much more wooded and certainly less thickly settled than the rest of the city. And this property stands alone as kind of an independent property that exists and continues to exist, aside from the subdivision next door. Taking that all into consideration and not worsening the right side setback at all, we believe the board can find that the proposed addition is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing structure. Additionally, I provided to the board two letters of support, one from One Briggs Avenue and one from Five Briggs Avenue. And so those are butters on the left-hand side along that sideline. With that, we request the board approve and issue a special permit for non-conformities to the applicants to allow them to go forward with the addition.
Okay, thank you, attorney, and Brown for the presentation. Closing that portion of the public hearing, we'll go to public comment. And anyone in the room who wishes to speak, feel free to just raise your hand. And seeing no hands, I'll just briefly go online. And anyone listening online via Zoom, if you wish to hear, just kindly raise your virtual hand. We will ask you to un-mute your mic, we'll do the same, and you will have the floor. We only have three attendees, seeing no hands. I will close that portion, the public comment portion of the public hearing, and we'll go into questions from the board and we'll begin with this one.
Yes, could you put the site plan back up, please, Caitlin?
The, you mentioned you had letters from someone at One Briggs and at Five Briggs. Is One Briggs the first one there, right, right along the ferry?
Yes.
Because this addition is kind of closest to that lot line over there. How about the person in the middle, I guess five is the second, the third one in?
Right, one, three, five, right?
You have a hearing to be from three.
Yeah, so the applicants went to three as well, the older couple. They took the plans, they asked questions, and they said thank you and they didn't.
Okay, all right, thank you. This plan also mentions line of conservation restriction, because you were commenting on what?
Sure, if you go, if you can go to the mine apps, Caitlin. So as I indicated earlier, Mr. Swan, the city has a wellhead next door. And so there is a four-hundred-foot radius from that wellhead that's called Zone One, right? So that exists, but some of it ran into this property. So this just dates me on this permitting. So a number of years ago, two thousand and ten, the then-owner of this property also owned a piece of property down on Merrimack Street to do a succeed. And as you know, before the current succeed was changed, one of the benefits that the city looked for in succeed is a donation of open space or something like that. And so because the four-hundred-foot radius went into this lot, but the city did not have an easement for it, which DEP wasn't happy about. The then-owner of the lot gave a conservation restriction to a significant portion of the back of the lot to the City of Newbury Port. So the city could control.
Help protect the well.
Correct, correct. So that's on, I have, I have the, actually, the conservation restriction and the easement here. So I don't know if you can see this or not, but the conservation restriction line, if you go back up to the site plan, starts at that diagonal area there and then covers the entire back of the lot. And on here, you can see the arc that comes through here for the Zone One protection, right? So where the city at the time couldn't control Zone One, that conservation restriction allowed them to do it. So none of this is done within that conservation restriction area.
All right, now the rest of it's all very clear, I have no other questions, thank you.
You're welcome.
Very good, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, I just had one question, it has to do with, in the south side elevation, if you can pull that up, show us the, set the floor down, get it down. Oh, that is it, no, you had it, I'm sorry. All right, so the top is the existing, and it has that little tiny small roof with the chimney on it. And it's, I don't know, it's half the size of the main house. And then the new addition is twice the size of that little addition, is that little addition remaining in place as is? That little tiny, I call it a breezeway?
Being removed, I mean, that's,
Being removed?
That's what we,
Okay.
needed to go to Historic Commission.
Okay, so that, that piece in its entirety will be gone.
Correct.
And you'll reattach the new addition to that. Got it, okay, understood, thank you, no other questions.
Very good, Mr. Delaunay.
A question with regard to that, to the addition versus the, the piece that Mr. Jagan was speaking of. What's the difference in length between those, those two?
We can clearly see that on the site plan there. Move in there a little bit. So I think if we were to, you know, there's sort of like a little bit of a neck, you know, between the main body of the house and, you know, where that note is of the proposed addition. You know, and they're, they're the same length. That neck is the same length as that existing rear L that we're removing.
Okay, but so,
That's your question.
Sort of, I think. But the, the end of the new addition will be how many feet beyond the end of the existing L?
Oh, it's a good question, it's right here, so it's exactly, you know, it's sort of the same length as the existing deck that is there. I don't have the dimension off the top of my head, and that looks like it's about twenty feet, closer than mine, so yeah.
Twenty feet from the back wall, it's an old part of the house.
Into the, into the end of, okay, yeah, all right, thank you.
No further questions.
Thank you, Mr. Better, no questions.
No, I appreciate Mr. Swan's question.
Very good, I too have no, no questions. So that will close the question from the board section of our public hearing, it goes to deliberations. And again, we'll deliberate the special permit for non-conformities criteria, which is, we all well know, is the two-pronged evaluation, Mr. Swan, if you want to kick in some influence.
Sure, two problems, the first problem, as Supreme made said earlier, I guess. Are there any new, are there any new non-conformities? And I don't see any, so I would say they're fine. The second problem has to do with whether this is more detrimental to the neighborhood than what's currently there and is not in form state. Well, as I look at this, it's a large house on an unusually large lot. It's a significant addition, but it's in the back, it's one-story. It's modest compared to the size of the house that's already there. And the coverage of the lot is tiny because it's such a huge lot. So I, I don't think this is detrimental to the neighborhood, and I can support this application.
Very good, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, I have similar thoughts, you know, the existing house being twenty-four hundred sixty-three square feet with the addition in three thousand ninety-four. Sounds like a big house, but, you know, when you look at it from the street and even from Briggs Avenue, you know, it's going to be hard to see other than the neighbors, and two out of the three are okay with it. I can assume the third is okay with it because they're not here opposing it. So I, I, I think it's, you know, it's well done, it's in the right place. If it was sideways, you know, we'd probably be working at it a little differently because you'd see it from the street. And the massing would come into play, but the lot can handle it, it's very well done, and I can support it.
Very good, and Mr. Delaunay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I would agree, I think for me, I would be more worried about the length of the extrusion if the, you know, if there was some sort of, what am I trying to say here? If the neighbors had, had raised some sort of objection, but under these circumstances, and that would be only because the, the lot line is so close, at eight feet, maybe nine feet, as it, as it goes back. But I think because you have, you know, you've gotten the letters of non-objection from the neighbors and your other sideline is seventy feet. And you've got all this space here, that this is, this is, this will be fine. So I can agree with my colleagues and support this.
Very good, and Mr. Bennett.
I agree with the comments of my colleagues. I would simply add that, at least then it hasn't been mentioned, I think it probably has. I think the architectural approach certainly mitigates the scale and massing concerns that might arise otherwise with an addition of this size. But otherwise, a lot as large as Mr. Swan, Mr. Shaglin, Mr. Delaunay, tipped off the factors that are then promptly to go there.
Very good, and Mr. Becker.
I would support.
I agree, and I don't need to echo or add to what's already been said, but I, I feel it's, it's an application that meets the criteria, and so I can support it as well. Anything further? No, we'll close the deliberations and go to the vote. Motion, I'm going to ask you, you're just closest, so you get to, you get your,
Motion made.
I move the, I move to approve the special permit for non-conformities for ninety-nine, very well.
Very good, motion is made. Motion approved, made, we have a second.
I'll second.
Mr. Shannon, motion is made, second for Mr. Shannon. And calling the world on the motion, and second, Mr. Swan, Mr. Shannon?
Yes.
Mr. Delaunay?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
And Rob Shepard, I vote yes, that's five in a row, the I-Savitt motion carried, and the application's approval.
Thank you very much.
All right, going to our second and final public hearing this evening, this is the application of Patrick Helfrich. Pardon me if I mispronounced that.
Helfrich.
Very good, thank you, sir. Application sixty-six Prospect Street, this is a special permit for non-conformities. The applicant seeks all necessary permits, permissions, and approvals from the Newbury Port CBA to construct a two-story addition in the rear of the property resulting in an extension of a pre-existing non-conforming setback. Mr. Helfrich, you have the floor, sir.
Thank you for having me tonight, I really appreciate it. This is my first time doing this, so I apologize in advance. So me and my wife, Rachel and Curtis, sixty-six Prospect Street. This is our first home, we're very excited to be in Newbury Port. I got a couple of bullets here, I'll try to go through them quick. So we're expecting a first show in January, which is the reason for the addition, we'd like a little bit of extra space. The house has not been occupied for quite some time. We had a pretty big mold issue when we bought the house, actually before we were able to secure a mortgage, we had to mitigate that issue. We're writing a commission to request a partial roof line change in the back and have to continue it. There is a side setback that is non-conforming that we'd just like to continue on. We have spoken to a few of our neighbors after reviewing the map, we have not spoken to all of them. But the ones that we did speak to were very positive with the changes and we received no complaints. Our intent is to leave the original structure intact and build an eight-by-twenty-one foot addition off the back. And it will be inset from the sides about two feet, so it should not be very visible from the street at all. And actually, the roof line is a little bit lower as well. So let's see what else we got here. There is a shed in the yard that we're going to remove, and that will make us conform to the same square footage of the lot with the addition. And so there is aluminum siding that is deteriorating, it really doesn't look great. We'd like to replace that with a hardy board on the front and the back, and we'd like to do cedar shakes on the sides. And in summary, I really just want to keep the historical beauty of this thing and just update it a little bit and make sure it blends in with the neighborhood, is really our goal here, with a little bit of extra space on the back. So here's some existing exterior photos. You can see, you know, moldy front, it is aluminum siding, some's kind of peeled off. Unfortunately, the siding below does not really seem savable. It's, so we'd like to just replace that with the hardy board. There's concrete stucco front that's kind of, you know, seen better days, as well as the overhang. We did go to Historical for this, and they, they called it historic, but not, the exact wording was they don't think it needs to be preserved. Along those lines, I'm sure I messed that up a little bit. So you can see some of the rot on the interior boards here. Older home, it's definitely had some water damage. The windows, there's some vinyl upstairs, it's kind of a mixed bag of windows. So we'd like to replace those with a wooden clad window on the exterior. And just kind of better thermal characters, all that, and just make them look a little bit nicer. I mean, the storm shutters on them are in terrible shape as well. So we'd just like to put a nicer window in there essentially. Some context photos, so our neighbor, which is tough to see, but in the bottom right there, it's kind of what we want to match. He's got the floors on the front and the cedar shakes on the side. That's really kind of the look we're going for, and to try to blend into the neighborhood a little bit here, but more than the aluminum siding anyways. So zoning matrix, so you can see the shed in the back on the lot there, so that will be removed. And that square footage equals what we'll be adding to the rear addition here. And, yeah, so here's the existing, and then, should have done these better, like the other guy had them, but, so you can see the hardy board up front on the bottom there and the cedar shakes on the side. And there's, there's a few window moves in the front, but more just to make it more uniform looking. And then a lot of the windows on the side stay the same, there's, there's a few additional windows, but they're pushed on. I think that's the end of my slide there, so.
Very good, well, thank you, we may have some questions for you, thank you for your presentation. We'll go ahead and close the presentation portion, the applicant presentation section of our hearing, and we'll go to public comment. Anyone in the room who wishes to speak in connection with the application? Very few hands, but seeing no hands raised, we'll go to our online. And I see no hands, I see no attendees, so, no people, no hands. We'll close public comment and go to questions from the board beginning with Mr. Delaunay.
Yeah, by the way, I bet the slides are very nice.
Yeah, good job, thank you.
I've seen a lot of pros come in here with slides that were not as clear, so.
Thank you. I didn't, yeah, hand sketch.
There, there were some good examples that I found on the website, or actually, Kate Caitlin showed me on the website, so I followed those as best I could.
Let's see, his first question, Joe. Actually, I think you covered everything, I don't have any questions. I live a block and a half away, I go by this house all the time, and thank you for dealing with this house.
I do very well. Very good, Mr. Chairman.
Just one question, it looks like the addition is eight by twenty-one, it's one hundred sixty-eight square feet. You know how big the house is today, square foot?
It's right under thirteen hundred, I believe.
Uh, it's right under thirteen hundred, I believe.
Man, okay. So still a small home when you're done.
Yes.
No, uh, I, I appreciate the fact that you're restoring a home that needs some, some loving care. The siding has always looked a little tough.
She does.
Um, so God bless you for taking it on. No other question.
Very good. Uh, Mr. Guo.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, what, what are you planning on using for the material around the, uh, for the, the, um. The corner boards and around the windows and that sort of stuff, just out of curiosity.
We're definitely gonna put some corner boards on there. Uh, we would be open, uh, you know, there's no real, I don't really want to put plastic in there. I don't think it looks very good. Um, so, um.
I would recommend the AZAC.
The AZAC, okay. I shouldn't have, shouldn't have said that, but.
Recommend that, but I mean, you can still do the, you know, the line, but it just doesn't last long.
Yeah, I was just curious. There's other choices too, right? You have a, a universe of choices to, to choose from, I would imagine.
Yeah, we're learning a lot, uh, as I go here for sure.
Yep, that's all I have to put.
Great. Uh, Mr. Bennett.
I have no questions.
Mr. Becker.
Guess my only question is, are you gonna repair the concrete steps? That's one of the things you wanna do.
I, I would like to, yes.
Okay. So my question is, would you maybe consider doing something different with the portico? It's just so bulky and large. It seems out of scale. This has nothing to do with my opinion on whether or not I would approve it. I'm just, it always bothered me that portico is just like.
Do you have any suggestions?
Yeah, yeah.
We'll, we'll, we're gonna make it look as, as good as possible.
Okay, yeah. Oh, large.
It is very large.
You know, it's, it's a reporter center.
I'm surprised it's still standing.
Yeah.
It's very raw.
You might listen around the neighborhood.
Yeah.
They're less.
Yeah.
Absolutely. We, we definitely like to blend in with the neighborhood and, and have a, have a little bit more charm to it.
All right, um, I, uh, was, was there? I, I don't have anything additional to add, um, although I, uh, I think it's wonderful. We've taken on the restoration of this one as well, so, um. With that, I'll close the deliberations and we will, uh, go to our distinguished, uh, motion man to my, uh.
Motion.
To my court side. Um, well, it's a two-pronged thing, as you may have heard in the last application. Are there any new nonconformities? I don't believe there are any new nonconformities. You already have quite a few, but there are. Uh, the next one is, is it more detrimental to the neighborhood? What you're proposing to do than it's current, it's not a component state, um. And. Not intensifying any of the nonconformities. It's not like you're getting cultured a lot lines or anything like that. You're not increasing the, uh. Coverage, you're actually taking out the shed, so you don't increase the coverage, um. So, um, I, I think you're, you're definitely not in, in the spirit of, uh, intensifying anything. Um, so having met the two-pronged, uh. Requirement, I can support this application. Very good.
Good. I, I agree. You know, everything is better. I can support it as well.
I'm just gonna add.
Yeah.
Uh, I know agree was just between, and I can, I can approve it. Uh, yeah, I can support that.
Very good. Thank you.
Yes, I can as well, and, uh. Congratulations for, uh, saving what is, uh, an important house that deserves saving.
And, uh, Mr. Becker.
Yes, likewise.
And I agree as well, Mr. Hellfrench. Nice job. Um, I, um. We'll close the deliberations and we'll ask for a motion, uh, to approve. I'll make a motion. Um, in light of the fact that, uh, the, uh. Parliament Public Services have not indicated a need to improve the treaties of the sidewalk, I think the motion would be quite simple. Uh, I move that we approve the special permit for nonconformities for sixty-six Prospect Street. Very good. Do we have any?
I'll second that motion.
Very good. Motion's made and seconded by Mr. Shannon, made by Mr. Shannon, Mr. Swanton, um, calling the world, Mr. Swanton.
Yes, Mr. Shannon.
Yes.
Mr. Guo.
Yes.
Mr. Bennett.
Yes.
And Rob Chappell, yes, uh, that's five in the affirmative. Ice habit motion carries. Good luck to you.
Thank you. Really appreciate it a lot.
Good luck. Thank you, thank you, uh, thank you again for taking on this project.
Well, hopefully it looks good in a few four months here.
Sure will.
Not the time to go here, but, right?
Yeah.
All right. Good luck, gentlemen. Appreciate it. Yeah, have a great night. I will close the public hearings of our Z B A hearing this evening and go into our business meeting. Um. The only matter before us is the approval of the minutes of ten twenty-four, twenty twenty-three. Uh, any comments, changes, revisions, and if not, do we have a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Great.
I will say.
And seconded by Mr. Bennett. Um, this is just a voice board, although in favor of the approval of the minutes of ten twenty-four, twenty twenty-three written, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None votes, abstentions? None? The ayes have it, motion carries, minutes are free. Um, updates from the chair, um, I, um, I'm gonna defer to Andy, if, if Andy wants to share anything with us.
Um, no, just as mentioned previously, there is a short term, I just got adopted. We'll give you some more information on that piece of it because there'll be some time before you're seeing applications a few months out at least.
Yeah, they have the second, the Monday night.
Um, yeah, so that's been, uh, approved on second reading now. Uh, I'm just waiting for the mayor's signature now, I guess. Um. So, yeah, so we'll just get some more information to you, you know, the final versions, um, obviously be posted on the website, but you know, you'll have only the investor category that would be coming in here on the mainland. Um, so if you have further questions, let me know. But, well, I'm sure we'll get into it. If you have further questions once you see the, the results.
I've got a question.
Yeah.
And, and I know I'll, I'll wait because I'll look at, you know, the final. I, I, I stopped looking at the language.
Yeah.
Of the revisions until it was actually second read, just because I had to keep modifying what I believed. Like, oh, I, I got it. Then I draw a pretty picture in my mind and then I would have to like a re.
Yeah, yeah.
So I, I haven't read the, the, the final, the second read, which is now improved version.
Right.
Uh, assuming nothing's remanded back by the mayor, you know, when they.
Correct, right. We're not expecting a veto, yeah.
So, so that, that being said, we're only going to get, uh, the investor category only as to the main, correct?
Correct, and, uh, there's also a stipulation on the investor category that was, this is on the last minute on the floor, sort of negotiation of terms, but. Um, that period of time in which those mainland investors versus, uh, those who are, you know, have the primary residence there. Um, the investors can really only exist for a s- uh, three to a year period. It was originally, uh, being proposed at that last meeting as a six-year term. Um, and then that got reduced, uh, during the negotiations with most counselors to our three-year term. So essentially. Uh, someone coming in for a short term rent unit, a special permit would be getting a three-year term, you know, as a special permit. But the license commission would be getting three yearly cycles with a license commission, but after that it would not be permitted as a use, so that landowner, you know. Person who's operating would have to think of other uses that like longer housing, so.
Now, what about, um. I mean, we can get into these weeds, but, um, in the event that title changes hands, they gotta reset. What about closely held title changes like from an individual, um, tenants by the entirety to just one of those two tenants by the entirety and.
For the investor category specifically, so we're going strictly off of what's on the state's, uh, listing. So whoever is registered at the time, uh, as of February of this year, uh, I think it's February. I forget what the exact date is in February, but February of this year, um, whoever is the entity at that time at a certain address is the one that's gonna have that.
Permission restriction.
Yeah.
So we're gonna be playing mu- musical Tennessee chairs, I'm sure, right? Like, I, I imagine. I hope not, you know, but I, I do want to make sure we sort of manage that expectations of what we're gonna see and how often we're gonna see it. But it looks like it's fairly advantaged.
Yeah.
Cycle on, um, investor only category.
Yeah.
We won't be seeing that category coming back or re-ups like we did with like nineteen.
Correct. Realistically, you would only see one cycle and, you know, we try to manage that how many are coming in. Obviously, you're not gonna be expected to handle, you know, significant number more than that. Um, and they have the same sort of contextual neighborhood issues for discussion. It's a quasi-commercial use in the neighborhood, so you gotta.
Correct.
So, uh, but you're gonna have just that influx of, at the beginning and presumably not really after that for the investor category, because the other ones are all permitted as a right subject for licensing and other conditions.
Will it be the, uh, planning office to take initial pass and sort of setting our docket to like manage that flow?
Yes, most definitely. Um, Jennifer, as typical, will be like, ensure, you know, things are compliant and they're in the right bucket or category for relief that's needed, right, that they're eligible. They'll be routed on and then obviously with Caitlin and Diane and I, we would just keep an eye with the agenda and make sure that, you know, Caitlin's constantly touching base with Diane and make sure that. Um, the agenda doesn't get excessive and, and we know that sort of five hearings a night is kind of like where we sort of tend to max out and when, you know.
Right. Will you also give us some criteria? So telling me know when one comes in, are we supposed to decide, like, for example, is it going to. Be negative for its street or whatnot? And what is, you'll give us the.
Yeah, I mean, just, just, hey, so the, the, there was some discussion around the council debate about zoning and, you know, and Rob was alluding to this, but there were probably. I, I can imagine at least a hundred versions that I've seen and worked with, you know, that there's a council over the years, because it's been like a three-year discussion of this. Um, but in the end, they, uh, there was discussion somewhere along the way about having particular conditions that would help to identify, you know. When does a certain threshold get reached where it's a problem for the neighborhood, so to speak, you know, paraphrasing, you know. Um, what's in the zoning that we have to consider for the, the findings? And in essence, uh, there was a decision or an outcome where there weren't any special provisions put in there, like. You know, so many short-term rent units within somebody radius of each other, on a given streetscape, you know, you can only have so many. There was no measurement like that was put in, so effectively you have the standard special permit criteria and you will have to on your own. As board members, you know, come to a conclusion as to whether or not you think it's more detrimental and, you know, not more detrimental, she says, not departments, but, um, it with the same sort of, you know, issue of. Detrimental, if you will. I don't know. I think it would be hard to argue that they, um, where the council has allowed it as a use by, you know, by special permit. Um, it would be, at least as a starting point, might be harder to make the argument that it's not something desirable, you know, and, and, you know, which is one of the criteria. That we typically look at right off the bat. Uh, I think it might be hard to make the argument it's not desirable, given that the council has essentially determined that to some degree. Um, however, you do have to look at the other criteria, perhaps more importantly as a board, to determine whether or not it has an impact that is essentially unacceptable. Um, and in that, that has some contextual location, you know, kind of context to it that you often consider, but, um. The evaluation that the Z B A does, um, you know, is not significantly more than a standard special permit criteria that you look at there in the zoning where it's already, because they didn't add it like special here.
I, I just think before we have to decide one, I can imagine a situation where you have fifteen neighbors coming in saying it's detrimental to our street. If the criteria is, is it different, is it detrimental to residential neighborhood and you got fifteen neighbors saying it is.
Yeah.
It is. Well, I, I, I know, I knew would say, yes.
Yeah.
Fifteen neighbors say it's detrimental.
Yeah, and I know you and I have had this discussion. I, I, you know, I, I understand that and that's, that's partly why I realize there's pros and cons to this whole aspect, but. That is partly why I happen to agree with, you know, the kids I've seen today that points to it as being a quasi-commercial use, because to me it's actually. More commercial in nature than residential, because it's, um, while it's a, as a residential component, it is essentially like a small sort of hotel, if you will. And that has a transient population, so, so to me, in a residential neighborhood. The transient population is something we associate with commercial uses, right? So that's the point where I realize as a board, you're gonna have to make some decisions as to whether or not you think that's happened. Um, and then there might be further debate though, you know.
Well, I'm just saying, given this is such a political, uh, hot potato, I just think if we bring up a string of fifty of these things come in.
Yeah.
Before the first one comes in and we get the first fifteen neighbors coming in, we really would like some input from council, from our city solicitor who helped write this thing. As to, did they? I don't know if they did or not, but I'd like some input from them.
Maybe version eleven.
They, hey, well, they weren't involved with the three-year period because we had changed the council wealthy recently, um, and they did review it largely as the form and issues that we're raising, you know, from a mechanical perspective. Um, they, you know, we were obviously throughout the process discussing the sort of policy level things and this and that. They were chiming in a little bit with that, but for the most part, they're looking to it as the form. Um, so they weren't involved with the whole three-year process of every aspect that's been debated during that time.
How many, how many are there investor owns that we know of? I mean, that officially, like that are coming.
Yeah, I was trying to forget off the top of my head, so I don't want to misquote the, um, Jennifer is probably our best estimator that who would want to check her tomorrow. I'd rather have her chiming in, because we've had.
I mean, it, it occurs to me, if there are so many and, and, you know, you have to put things on the docket. Then the first person on the docket would be easier than the fifth person in the same neighborhood, can you say like, it's an excessive use in this neighborhood.
This is.
Sorry, you weren't on the docket two weeks ago.
Yeah, and this is, again, without taking a stance per se, this is one of the concerns that I had raised, one or the other, that we, you know, as the zoning was being, you know, considered and adopted, that. It, you know, we make a conscious decision as a city, regardless of what the outcome is and then the adoption of zoning, conscious decision as to whether or not we're adding any special criteria to benefit the board. As guidance from the council, uh, because now the determination of whether or not it's in excess, let's say for the neighborhood is one of the criteria. Um, that you'll have to make your judgment call based on, you know, everything in context, if you will. Not because there has been any specificity added, and I, and I think the council would probably point to the same, that there is nothing in it that says, you know. Oh, you know, only a certain number on the streetscape or the, you know, the board may determine that, you know, after one on a streetscape or, you know, a segment, you know, block of the street. Or, um, you know, face of a street or, um, you know, somebody within a certain radius of each other, you know, how many hundreds of feet between each other. There was nothing like that thrown in there, so I think you will have to, you know, each time, that's, that was the part that I was flagging was, at what point does the Z B A know? That the excess threshold has been crossed.
Yeah.
Uh, because to your point, you know, they, if they look all identical, if they're ostensibly identical, it's not clear to me when the board is in a position to then say no to someone. If it's extensively identical, the one that just came before, that is approved.
And there are three on Middle Street, right? So it's like whoever's in the door first.
Yes, yes.
Seems like it's harder to say no to that than the fourth person on Middle Street. You know, like now this is, and for the natives.
Well, maybe you say no to the first one, just. Yeah, I, I don't know what to tell you. We'll all, we'll all be kind of.
I think, I think we're gonna need like. I think in fairness, we're just gonna need to feel our way a little bit.
Yeah.
And, uh, give feedback as we, you know, as we feel it, as we see it, you know, that sort of adage, see something, say something.
Yeah.
And I mean, I don't know any other way.
And the, the investor has to come here in person, is that my understanding?
Or, or their rep, I mean, obviously, yeah, obviously with a, you know, we, an attorney coming, you know, for them representing, but, you know, basically it's.
Uh-huh.
Or they could present via Zoom, just like a nailer.
They can.
That's right, yeah, yeah, they could be on Zoom.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Are we gonna, can I ask a question, um, about the investor, the investor class, um, or. Who being, whatever, is that everywhere in the city now or is it just in certain areas?
That's all the mainland, but, uh, they're only allowed in, in certain districts.
Yeah, so which, so which districts are they allowed in, or is it difficult to?
It's all, our one, two, three and the one.
Yeah, I mean.
Okay, so they changed that dramatically. At first, they were, it was concentrated.
It was much more constrained and also the original proposal going back, and I know there was even some comment here from this board about it at the time, because and I, I. Tend to agree with some of the concerns that were raised, because it was allowed, um, but a lot of it was based on, uh, special permits, but everything was requiring a special permit and. Aside from any policy level questions, uh, which was obviously a separate question, I was partially concerned that, that this board would not be able to absorb the number of special permits that would be coming in. If every short-term rental unit, depending on parameters and, you know.
Yeah.
Which coming to this board, I don't think it would have been manageable for this board to do all that.
Yeah, we did some early math here, because we, we threw the first tranche in.
Before the second tranche.
Before the first approved ones were coming up.
Yeah. Right, right, right.
Assuming we did, assuming we surrendered two, um, uh, three fifths of our agenda. Or two fifths of our agenda, like two out of the five lots to short, to a short-term rental special permit, we forecasted. Based on the numbers that they were known at the time, that it was gonna take like three, like one, two, five years to get through the list.
So with, with this, uh, waterfall about to, to take place, um. Would this be a good time to discuss changing the way that public comment is done at the meetings to. To only have live public comment like the way they've done in the city council? I mean, we could still have the hybrid meetings. On Zoom, but, but comments would have to be delivered in person. Like, I think, I think we're among the last boards in the state that are taking hybrid comments.
You, uh, you'll have to decide as a board how you want to handle that. Obviously, we'll be responsive to that. Uh, it would be good in whatever, if you're going to make an adjustment like that, we'll try as best, I think, we suggest we'd surprise, much as possible, we try to make sure that's very, uh, clearly noted. So for instance, we send a notice out to folks, you know, and we happen to know that it's a hybrid meeting. Part of this goes back to, um, expectations from the pandemic, but part of it also goes back to the idea of, um. It was an order of the city council about recording, particularly with the Z B A and the planning board meetings and whatnot. So, uh, there's this expectation essentially beyond the city council's primary, you know, board that you think of as, um, than these two boards, that there's more. Sort of transparency and visibility of the permitting that's happening, right? You know, so, um. Yeah, so you'll have to decide if you want to eliminate the, that comment, uh, portion, but I would.
I would take it a step further. I see no reason why the investor applicants don't have to be here in person. That's. It, that makes no sense to me.
Well, if you can have an attorney represent you, I don't know how we.
Here and here in person, not on Zoom, no Zoom, all for the.
Oh, I see what you're saying. Oh, I see what you're saying.
Here.
Yeah, well, and, and again, one other thing that could be discussed is, is that whole concept of, and I just thrown out there is. Uh, and I think I would suggest if we're gonna go this route, that we have further discussions both with the mayor's office and with the city council, you know. In some rapidly, so the city council, to make sure we're on the same page, probably the president at least. Um, if we're going to eliminate the remote portion and say, go only back. If we're going to eliminate the remote portion and say go only back to the in person just to make sure, because we have heard messages on both ends of the spectrum, if you will, since, I would say, since the pandemic, you know, of these expectations that are sort of built up with it, that was sort of part of the dream.
Yeah, but
so.
I I, yeah, I I would just say to that, like, you, I think if you go back in your memory bank, you can remember that during the pandemic, those meetings were interminable. They went on forever because we had every person calling from their bed.
Yeah.
You know, have making comments. And I think it it the second thing with that, though, is there was a a decrease in civility in the comments too.
I I would disagree. I would I would say for the most part, other than maybe.
Yeah, exactly. People treat, people are 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 scared to treat people poorly when they have to look them in the eye.
I I don't disagree with that at all. What the only, the reason I suggest here that we had that discussion there is only because I think it would be probably easier in all respects to remove the remote component of the meeting and go back to only in person rather than trying to make sure that people know whether or not they're remote, they can.
I agree with that.
I would worry about people like complaining and saying they're upset to their board councils, for instance, that the board wasn't, you know, taking their comments because they didn't know. You know, and I would rather almost completely segment, you know, just to connect from that and then.
They're gonna take.
Well, I just, no, I just meant the public comment. I don't care if people who could view it on over Zoom.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
What the, what does the planning board?
So there's still the hybrid setup. They take the the comments remotely. I haven't seen any of the, we certainly saw some of that against the beginning. We're all getting kind of used to things with the pandemic and things have gotten more efficient, you know. Obviously, it's a little easier with us in the room. But the, other than the city council recently, there was one, you know, attempt, I think it was as something that looked like the Middle East, you know, there was something that's.
Two in a row.
Two in a row. It was a very brief thing.
Two Zoom bombs. Oh, is that right?
Really?
Yeah. Couldn't shut it off.
Well, yeah, I don't know. I would, because I wasn't the host, I don't know what they had to do, but it was.
I kept all it. So Andy, who who has the authority to make the decision on whether or not the hearings must be approved or not? Is that a city council?
Yeah, and we have to say. Part of, because of some lack of continuity, let's say, you know, there was some transitions, if you will, between administration, the council and so forth in recent years. I I think to make sure there's no, you know, people who are on different pages feeling it's a lot. It's not exactly clear that everybody would feel comfortable with change one way or the direction. And my suggestion here is just that we have that discussion with the, you know, administration, the executive and the legislative branch, you know. I'm not saying go to the entire city council, I will think go to committee and all that. But at least talk with the council president, just to make sure we're on the same page if we're going to make an adjustment that's perhaps different than constituents might expect at this point or, you know, in one way or another. Not that I'm suggesting or advocating one or the other, just because I think it would be better, a better, smoother transition to that than having people, you know, upset or offended that they didn't know we're making a transition that folks had might have become accustomed to in one or all. So. I happen to, if you have a preference, I'm happy to convey that and do that kind of relay for us essentially to speed it up. If there's a preference for, you know.
Just, just like, like all live?
Oh, I mean, people can listen in, but I can't talk.
Yeah.
If you want to participate, you gotta come.
I mean, the council did it because of these people calling in and ranting and raving about Israel.
Well, I think it was, it was, it was even before that, right? That they had done.
But but I think, no, they did it after the second one. I said stop, no more, nobody can call in.
You want to come, if you want to speak, you have to be there.
You want to speak, you have to be there. And you still get the 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 coops coming at it. Guy was dressed up with a mask one night.
But at least he had to come in.
Yeah. He came in.
He really wanted to.
And he sang a song. Yeah.
Was it a good song?
It wasn't a good song. He he, it was very pitchy, I thought.
Oh.
I, again, I think it could, quite simply, in the planning board, we would defer, you know, we had discussion with them as well for a similar vein, but if you have a preference for going in person, doing an adjustment of sort of the middle ground there, I just caution with that, just, I I hope we don't want to confuse people. I wouldn't want to confuse people and have people disgruntled that they can't, you know.
It's confusing when Mr. Swan has to go on Zoom to hear his girl profession. Coming to the senior center and saying why isn't, why is that commission?
We're all fine. And the licensing commission is also still strictly Zoom, which is interesting and outlier, just like historic, but.
Each board is entitled, there's a, there's a period of time still where they can do that. So, you know, it's so, it's up to each board to decide.
When is the period of time?
I believe it goes to March of next year, I think.
March of twenty four.
I think it's either twenty four or twenty five. I think it might actually be twenty five, but.
Isn't it the case, though, that most other cities and towns have gone back to to live?
Quite frankly, I've not been, you've been dragged of every, don't forget, there's multiple boards in every city and town.
Yeah, no, no.
So I I have not.
The primary board.
Yeah, I I I'm trying. That's the thing is, I'm not, most of our other boards, like they're either back in person or remote, you know, but I think the combination one is obviously more difficult, certainly for Caitlin, much more difficult. Part of that has been the lack of, no matter how much we've tried, I've certainly advocated. We have had transitions of, you know, IT and so forth that are quite significant, but have not been able to get better equipment in the room. So it's, it causes, you know, some concern for us, the fact that the equipment grew down, you know.
Or yeah, or and sometimes, sometimes things get lost. People get lost too and, you know.
Yeah.
You know, they, and so I think that.
Yeah.
That's a concern also. But maybe.
I guess, starting with what your preference is would be, might be a good way to go, because then I could sort of, we could sort of decide if, when we can adjust.
I always would love to be a person with no technology. It's like it used to be throughout all of human history.
And if the board prefers that, I'm more than happy to kind of relay and say, you know, this is the preference of the board. I have no objection to it, you know, kind of clear of this and that, but we want to make sure that, you know, as with the the council president, I'd want to make sure that all the councils knew that 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 wasn't an adjustment we're making so that their constituents weren't saying to them at some point, you know, we were, you know, it went away, we didn't, you know. Everybody knows, you know, that it's better, it's gonna function better essentially for our meetings.
We, as a board, let me just pitch this out there. Ample notice aligned with, you know, a natural and logical human time transition of January first and the new year.
Yeah.
If the board is inclined, how about we begin to signal that way, like as soon as possible, then it's our inclination that we'd like to do that as of January first and then it's a logical thing.
I think that makes sense.
I would only say, when do the, when will those licensing things start coming in?
They're not gonna come until next year.
Okay, okay, okay. Yeah.
So.
Um, sure.
Who would that disband in the city hall or?
No, that's.
No, but frankly, I think that's one. I mean, we can, Rob and I, we can talk about that with.
That's been like my, I I I have no idea like why we, why we could vanish.
I I have brought it up a couple of times.
There's one subcommittee's like the room.
Keep, yeah, keep in mind that the number of subcommittee meetings has has increased since that, since we recruited from the council chambers, the number of committee meetings has gone up. So the likelihood, because they now want to make sure they can do all their committee meetings on different nights, and sometimes have flexibility with that room, it's the only room they can guarantee themselves as councilors. Because they have care and custody of that room. It's part of the reason why I don't think that's likely to be, you know, changed, but that's, you can revisit it, but I think it's a separate question.
To to your point, Rob, I I would just amend the thought. I mean, I think as a nod towards transparency, I would be comfortable with our hearings to be on Zoom. People want to watch them as spectators for.
Right, but it's.
But participation, applicants, their their representatives, and any person who wants to speak must appear before us.
Yep.
Yeah, okay.
So basically, we treat this one just like it would be for media where it can be streamed and you just watch.
So it's not, so it doesn't sever people from the ability to be informed and participate.
Right, and the transparency to maintain.
And and see everything, even if they can't get into a car.
Yeah, yeah. Well, I think the the Zoom bombing thing, the lack of, you know, adequate, I would say adequate equipment to really be able to do this effectively and and know that it's not going to be able to go down, you know. Those are all good reasons, I think, to go back to just a, you know, person.
This is that proposal and I I feel like in the sort of, in the wake of the, you know, the the sort of tidal special permits that we're about to start to hear, this is a good time to say.
Yeah.
Because of that philosophy, because of that, we are, we're making an anticipated, we're we're taking an anticipatory action toward streamlining the process by which we conduct the business of the city vis a vis the 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 zone, zone board appeals in the interest of, you know, administrative economy and time respect to all of those who choose to or elect to participate without severing anyone who chooses to or elects to observe. We have decided to to go with a singular strategy of participation equals presence onsite live and and you can still observe and follow along just like you used to be able to, you know, and like most every city in town can. You can log on, watch any city board hearing you should be.
Yep.
But but if you wish to participate, I think we are doing ourselves a great service and the public a great service. And as we try to onboard this new velocity of time demands that will be coming as a result, direct result of the short term rental units.
Good shoes, good shoes.
So I think, like, let's start to.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Um, that's helpful to us because it's, knowing where you want to.
And it's a soft diversion and it's soft landing. And we'd like to signal to the counselors and the mayor with their input, of course, and and with their hopeful, you know, courtesy and consent. Or at least no objection.
Yeah.
As of January first, we'd like to begin fresh and anew with this as we, as we sort of like, you know, barrel headlong toward all of these special permits and we sort of get our, get our ceilings. Because I think that's gonna be good for us. I think that it will, it will cut a whole segment out of the, you know, let's check the room. Now let's check online. I miss somebody and then I stare as you all do to like, you know, the the hand that's up and it's asking, I can't. There's no gesturing able, it'll be done. We're we're left with the, you know, with the byproduct of someone feeling, you know, distant grand shots, even if it's not our task. You know what I mean? So I'm all, I'm, I think it's a great solution for you, you guys, like the sort of collaborator who just went through. It took some time to do it. I think that's a, that's an improvement on how we do it.
Different question, and I ask only as to the board members. If a board member or, let's say hypothetically, several board members, because, you know, it comes to one of those foreign things, being able to vote and have a meeting. If board members are not able to be somehow in the room, do you want to be able to maintain board members' ability to connect or versus versus going back?
I think we have to be all in or all out.
No, that, I just want to make sure.
We're all in the same rules. I don't think we can credibly position ourselves.
Sure.
I think, you know, we passed the straight face test.
Sure.
Nor should we, you know, like, I think that it's what is, you know, what we, what we hold the public, you know, accountable to, we hold ourselves accountable to. And it just, and the chips fall where they fall.
Right. Thank you.
Okay. Do you guys agree? I mean, that's just my.
Yeah. That's what I thought students now, if you're acting, you missed it, there's nobody to worry.
At the end of the day. You know, it's a, we we live in a physical world and it is a show to go culture by and large. The technology helps us alleviate the, you know, the the bottlenecks in that regard, but it should never be a substitute for personal engagement, especially when it comes to like business, that's a business of collaboration, interaction, engagement, I think, to the benefit of all.
I want to make one comment, which is I just spent two and a half hours watching a Zoom only meeting with the store commission. And it was painful. They didn't turn on their cameras, so they couldn't talk to each other. They had no idea who and what to say or anything. I gotta tell you, this board did a much better job in going through COVID era. I'm proud of what we did. It wasn't anywhere near as evil as what I did.
This is two years after COVID.
Yeah.
I think, I think it's great. So with nothing further, thank you all for that.
Yeah.
Motion to adjourn. So moved. All right. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
And adjourned. Thank you guys. Yeah, Andy, let's, 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 let's.